Do the Pledge of Allegiance. Are you all set?
I'm all set and reporting.
Through Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law in the governor's March 15, 2020 order, limiting the number of people that can gather, this meeting is being conducted via remote participation. The governor said although no public would be allowed to attend, every effort should be made to ensure that everyone has access to this meeting. This meeting is being recorded and will be available on cable channel nine and will be uploaded to YouTube. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? My flag's right outside.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. I'm sorry, I got the second meeting in my mind. Thank you. Okay, this is the budget workshop and you want to go right down in the order of the list of the agenda. Town Administrator's Budget 124.
Much of this is a decrease or a, I'll just present my budget if you're looking for that. Most of this is a decrease, especially on the expenditure side or it's level funded. We did sign on with Special Counsel for Unemployment, who specifies or specifically specializes in unemployment claims. It's proved useful and very helpful. So I've included an increase to accommodate for that contract and I tried to make up for it and then some in the rest of my expenses. And then of course there's.
What line is that, Mallory?
I'm sorry, so that's under Professional Technical 5300. You'll see a 76% increase. And I just tried to move some money from other lines into that one because, you know, I have what I need for the most part here. And then obviously the salary, I think it's well known, there's a bit of a dispute, but the previous vote which happened in executive session has not been ratified, was the two and a half percent. I don't, I don't know what you want me to put in there. I don't really know what to do.
Unfortunately, because of the guidelines that we now have under the evaluations, would it not go down to 2%?
I haven't had my evaluation. I don't have a score, so.
You. I see what he's saying. That was the maximum we approved was 2%.
Okay, so then you'd have to, because it's been voted, you need to reconsider and make a new vote.
I thought you said it wasn't voted on.
In executive session it was.
Okay. And the other question I have, I think the executive assistants' salaries off by $10, it should be $10 less.
So unfortunately I have put a line, oh, 363 instead of 353 instead of 363, yes.
It should be 353.
Yep.
Yep. I have no major concern since your evaluation is not going to happen until June, if I'm correct. Keeping it at two and a half percent. I don't know what the rest of the board feels. Anyone else have a comment on that?
So I understand the point that we did the 2% based on a certain score and then a 1% if it was lower than whatever the cutoff was. I think it was 80%. I do think we, I'm happy to stand by the 2.5% at least because I know a big part of what the town administrator has been doing is not explicitly written in any of her duties or her contract, but she has been doing a lot of grant writing, which I think has been above and beyond what is stipulated. I think that I'm happy to support the 2.5% knowing that a lot of work is being done outside the scope of, again, the contract, what's written in there, the job duties that we adopted when we created the role of and established the role of town administrator. And I think the grant writing, which is really important, is something that I'm willing to support the previous vote of 2.5%. That's, that's all I had on that, Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Coolout, do you have any comment on that?
So my question is, on to FY21, it says 117,000. Is that two and a half percent over this year's base?
So the 117,000 was my original request of you as the board. And so that's, I kept that in my departmental request based upon a previous discussion we had before all this COVID stuff. So I kept that there. The amount that was voted at two and a half percent, for you to do the math, it's 115, 312 and 50 cents.
Is that your? Go ahead.
I was just going to repeat it for your benefit. 115,312 dollars and 50 cents. That's the two and a half percent and base pay. I think you're going to ask me if that's my base pay.
Exactly. Is that your base pay? Because you have, just like everybody else has other, like degree status and those kinds of things.
Right. And so for transparency's sake, my stipends add up to 2,920 and I was not seeking any increase in any of those.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add one thing. So if we were to take the 2.5%, I have a different total for the department total under FY21 departmental request. I have a total of 162,086 dollars flat. Is that what everyone else has if we were to take the 2.5%? This is based on our discussion, probably in executive session back in March, I believe.
So is that instead of 163, 773, 50?
Yes, because, and that difference, Selectman Goulart, is from decreasing the salary from 117 to 115, 312 and 50 cents. So that's how I.
And my notes have that 162, 086 from the last time we talked about that. So that number's right.
Okay. And I just wanted to, just to state publicly, Mr. Chairman, that I stand by what we decided last time with the 2% if you get an 80% or better, 1% if you get an 80, below an 80%. But I do think we already took this vote. This is just my position. And I know that the town administrator does do a lot of things outside the scope, again, of the contractual obligations and also the job duties. So that's why I'm going to stand by the 2.5 that we, we voted on last time before all of, before we made the decision last week.
I have a question now. When Brett was talking, I lost the volume. Did anybody else lose the volume?
No.
Everybody, everybody else? Yes, I agree. I agree, Dr. Z, that we had voted on this, the two and a half percent. I think in the future, we're going to go by what we voted on as far as evaluations. But we did vote on this in executive sessions much prior to our vote on everybody's evaluation. The other thing is, I think that figure's off by $10 because we've adjusted the executive assistants by $10 less. So I think that figure of 162, 086 should be 162, 076. Is that correct?
Yeah.
As a total budget? Any other questions about this budget?
Mr. Chairman, I got a question, not about the budget. Are you, are you using Wi-Fi or are you?
I'm using Wi-Fi.
Is that why you've had trouble in the past? Do you know?
I think so. I'm right next to my Wi-Fi right now, but I'm still having the same problem.
Is anybody else using a computer in your house?
Nope.
Oh, okay. All right.
I will say, Mr. Chairman, you're, you're not dipping out anymore to me. I can hear you and see you fine, but it sounds like you're not maybe able to hear the other people consistently.
Occasionally you guys will freeze and I hear nothing. And the last time when you spoke, I could see people moving, but I couldn't hear you. So I hope I don't have this the whole night. Is there, maybe during the break, we can figure out some way? Can I also call in at the same time?
Yeah.
I would suggest that. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, what you'll do is you'll dial in, there'll be a meeting ID and a password. You'll enter it and then once it accepts it, you should mute your computer, else you'll hear an echo.
But I can still see.
Yep.
See me from the phone, you'll see me from the computer.
Yep. And we'll hear you from the phone, so it'll be consistent. There won't be a breakup.
I gotta put my phone on. Okay. So do we want to take a vote on this budget then?
Okay, one other question. I just have one question. Dr. Z, what is the line number you found you wanted to change by 10?
That was Selectman Pacheco, Chairman Pacheco, I think it was the salary, right?
5110. 5110.
So the number is 313?
31, 353, 50 cents.
Oh, all right. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we ratify the vote taken to set the town administrator's salary at 115,312 dollars and 50 cents by FY20, which includes a two and a half percent increase.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman.
Next. Yes.
I move that we approve and send to the Finance Committee a total, excuse me, a total town administrator budget by FY20, excuse me, FY21. We don't want to repeat FY20. Let me do that again. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve and send to the Finance Committee the town administrator's budget for a total of 162, 076.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, the ayes have it. The next agenda item is the Board of Assessors, 141.
You had held this previously based upon salary increases. So I have just notes specifically about 5101, 5102, and then a note that says we'll need adjustments for clerical union negotiations, which is, you know, obvious for all of those. So those were the reasons for your holding of it the last time this came before you.
Can we send this on to the Finance Committee for discussion with the, under the conditions that we know that the union contract is open?
Is that a question for the town administrator?
That's for anybody that can answer it.
I was saying yes. I was nodding my head.
Yeah, I think I'm okay with that, Selectman Goulart.
Okay, so Mr., oh, if there aren't any other questions, I'll make a motion.
I have no questions.
Mr. Chairman, I will move that we send to the Finance Committee the budget for the Board of Assessors for FY21 as submitted with the caveat that union salaries have not been negotiated that are in this budget.
I'm sorry. Is there a second?
Second. I'm sorry, I actually did not say anything. I was writing it down. I apologize.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
Before we move on, may I ask a question about your meeting with the Finance Committee? If you, do you, do you plan now on meeting with the Finance Committee for just the budgets that, like this one, that you've made that kind of motion for? Or is this going forward? You want to meet with them? I mean, now it's easy because it's Zoom, so you can just zoom in with it. But do you, are you planning on always meeting or coming into all of their meetings? And we'll just post them?
We have, I think, right?
Yeah, in the past.
In the past. So we're going to get into a practice, just forever, going forward, that we're going to post you whenever Finance Committee is going.
Yes.
All right. Karen, can you just make a note of that? And then we'll just make, tomorrow we'll post all the selectmen meetings with you.
Sure. When is the FinCom's first meeting?
April 30th.
Twenty eight.
Well, it wasn't 20, it's my mistake. They had said at their meeting that they didn't want to meet that night because it was a budget hearing for the school. So we pushed everything back a meeting and I've, we've sent out their Zoom information. We've sent out the schedule to department heads and we'll make sure you get it too. Just wanted to get the Board of Selectmen meeting aspect out of the way with that as well.
Okay, and the budget hearing at DR is supposed to be next Tuesday night?
Right.
And if everybody didn't get it, Dr. Azai did send us the information so that we can sit in.
Will somebody forward that to me? Because I don't remember seeing it, but I get a lot of emails these days.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm starting, I'm trying to get on and it keeps on telling me I'm giving the wrong number, ID number.
Yeah, I'm going to text you again.
Okay.
Can we, do you want to declare a brief recess?
Nope, nope, we can go forward as long as our clerk can take over the meeting for me if I need, needed to.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear us talking?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
So I was a little distracted. We voted on the Board of Assessors budget.
Right, and we're sending it on so they can discuss it. But there's the caveat that the collective bargaining agreement has not been settled.
Yes, very good. Thank you. So the next budget is the Town Treasurer.
Same rules apply as far as that union thing goes here in the Town Collector and the Treasurer, excuse me, the Treasurer and the Collector budget. I have the same note.
Yep. So is there a motion?
I'll make, yes. Mrs. Brady, the motion that I just made on the assessors, it's the exact same motion, only it's for the Town Treasurer with the same caveat that the, we're sending it on to the FinCom and the caveat is the collective bargaining agreement has not been settled yet. Okay?
Okay, okay.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just looking at my notes from those, the last two budgets. And I've got notes that the increase for the, I'll call them department heads, is 2%. Are we in agreement on that? Because the number that they budgeted was higher, or the number they requested.
Yep. You're correct. They asked for three, the last budget, 145 Town Treasurer was 3.15 and we've actually agreed to 2% and I believe part of our agenda has the, actually doesn't, doesn't have the salary, but no, we, this would not be a case where evaluations are taken into consideration because they're elected, we don't do evaluations, but we had agreed to just a 2% increase.
Okay, okay.
But so, did we vote on, Town Administrator, did we vote on the right figure then? Or do we need to go back to that?
So we would, my notes don't say that you vote on it. It just says, well, I usually keep track if you take a vote. And it doesn't have a vote there. It just says, basically, what I'm getting from my note is that you discussed it, you settled on 2% and that's what you would recommend to the Finance Committee, but you held the budget overall. So there was no vote taken. And again, it would just be a recommendation because you don't set the salaries for the elected officials of FinCom. I can quickly calculate a 2%.
Mr. Chairman, I want to amend the motion on the Board of Assessors and then I want to make the same amendment to the Treasurer.
Okay.
The amendment is that we send the budget to the Finance Committee with it containing a 2% increase for the chairman and members of the Board of Assessors. Because I've already made the caveat about the union contract being open.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, so you need to call a vote on the amendment and then vote on the original motion as amended, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. I'll call a vote on the amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. There's a second amendment coming?
No, no, vote on the original motion as amended is the next one.
We're going to vote on the motion as originally amended?
Original motion as amended.
Original motion as amended.
Gets technical.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
Okay, so the next motion is an amendment to the vote, or the motion I made for the Town Treasurer. And the amendment is that the salary for the Treasurer shows an increase of 2%.
Second. I approve of the amendment.
Yep. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
And now just to vote on the original motion as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
Going forward, I'll try to include the percentage in the motion.
The next one is the 146, the Town Collector. And I think the same thing applies here.
Yes.
We've had a discussion about this and it's also, we will recommend it a 2%.
Yes.
So I'll entertain a motion.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I move that we send the proposed FY21 budget for the Town Collector to the Finance Committee showing a 2% increase for the Town Collector with the caveat that the union contract is still open.
Second.
Any, any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. The next agenda item is the Town Clerk, 161.
I have another note here that you settled and landed on 2%, but no vote taken.
I believe that's correct.
Yeah, I do too.
Any discussion or is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we send to the Finance Committee the budget for the FY21 for the Town Clerk showing a 2% increase in salary for the Town Clerk with a caveat that the collective bargaining agreement is still open.
Any, any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. The next agenda item is 175, the Planning Board Budget. We had discussed this and I thought, I thought we had agreed that the stipends for the Chair and the members was not going to get the 2% increase. Is that correct?
That was our.
Yeah, they had asked for two and a half and we had, we had discussed no increase for the stipend? Because we weren't giving it to anybody else. Any, any other board members?
Yep, that's correct.
So I don't know what the new figure is, but I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we.
I'm sorry, before we make a motion, can we just reference the 5110 line? It anticipates a two and a half increase for the clerical union. I don't know if you wanted to get rid of that increase, keep it in there and send to the Finance Committee, hey, just FYI, it's not settled yet and keep it there? I just am calling your attention because it has the same two and a half percent increase.
That doesn't, that's not reflected, that has nothing to do with the clerical contract, right?
There's, there's been nothing.
Yeah, but no, but this is a stipend. This is not a salary.
No, there's a two and a half percent increase for the office manager listed. They've anticipated.
Okay, 51, yes, okay, 5110, I'm sorry, I was.
Yeah, that's okay, 5110.
Yeah, no, I was thinking 5101, 01, and I thought maybe you were confusing the number, but I was confusing the number. Sorry, Mallory.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we send the Planning Board Budget to the Finance Committee with no increase in lines 5101, 5102 and 5110 is open because the collective bargaining agreement has not been settled. So I would leave 5110 without an increase at this time.
Is there a second?
I'm going to second that.
Yep. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Mr. Chairman.
Aye.
Yes. When we reduce, just as an FYI, when we reduce the stipends, do we need that total for the motion? Or is it fine just being understood that those are coming out?
For me, it's fine.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. For me, it's fine because the intent is very clearly stated and we can go back to this and revise later.
Yeah, and actually, all of these budgets that I've put that caveat in, the totals are going to be adjusted anyhow, once those contracts, that contract is settled.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. The next budget is the Board of, we didn't do the Board of Appeals yet, right?
Yeah, hold from March 11.
Yeah, 176. It's a similar situation with the stipends. And there's the Part-Time Office Manager. We haven't negotiated the contract yet, so it's going to be similar to other budgets that we voted on. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we send the Board of Appeals Budget FY21 to the Finance Committee with no increase for board members in the stipend and the, and the, no, no percentage increase for the Part-Time Office Manager because the collective bargaining agreement is open.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. The next budget is to tennis, the Police Department. Do we know if the chief is going to join this meeting?
I don't believe he is, but he did email me today, today and say that he is not asking for the additional hours for his clerical staff.
And there was still discussion on the salary in that email?
No, that will be done in executive session and I've researched how to do that with Zoom and it's called a breakout and I'm going to practice with Karen and we'll set that up. And later in the next meeting, the one tonight, there's a request to, to find a date where we can conduct that.
Okay, very good. Any discussion?
The line 5110?
Yes, you would unhold that.
All right, is, so is, are the 32 hours that are listed, is that what she's working now?
Correct. There was conversations about adding three hours for her off and on all year. He's kind of brought it up sometimes in a full-on discussion and sometimes just in passing. And so I just wanted to verify because the figure here does not include that increase. So I wanted to know if he was going forward. And he did indicate today that he's not going to go forward with additional hours. And I'm assuming that has something to do with our current economic affairs.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we send the Police Department Budget for FY21 to the Finance Committee with the caveat on line 5105 that we have not completed negotiations with the chief and we have, and we, on line 5110, the collective bargaining agreement is still open.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, yep.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to call attention. Are you still considering moving that, that line 5250 down to five as previously discussed? I have a note that that was voted on 318. I want to make sure that everyone, that we all have that.
I have that, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Everybody else have it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Next budget is Communications, 215. So it's my understanding that we pass this budget on March 18th, but not line 5119? Is that correct?
Correct. It's the same reason because your negotiations with the chief are still outstanding.
So do we take a vote on this at all or do we just wait for that executive board meeting?
We'll just wait.
Okay.
Well, actually, we want to send it on to the FinCom anyhow, so. So I should make the same motion I did on police.
And hold those lines, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we send the communications department budget for FY21 to the finance committee with the caveat on line 5119 that we have not completed negotiations. And aren't the 5105 and 5106, aren't those open? Aren't you working on that contract?
Yes, there's been literally no movement on it. I actually had a conversation today, but the 5105, it has an increase there, you see, for 24%. That's because they're proposing to add an additional dispatcher for daytime operations. But it doesn't include the, any proposed increase.
Okay, so, Mrs. Brady, so when I said about the salary for the chief, we haven't negotiated it. And with line 5105 being approved for an additional full-time operator, but also with the caveat that the collective bargaining agreement is, has not been settled yet.
Okay.
Do we have a second then?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Next budget is the fire department, 220.
And it's just these two lines, if you want to make that same motion, selectman Gulart. Or a combination of the last two.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we send the fire department budget for FY21 to the finance committee with the caveat that we have not completed negotiations with the fire chief. And the line 5115, the collective bargaining agreement is still open.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Next budget is the ambulance services. 231.
But you've already made this motion similar on pre-18, you just didn't pass it to the finance committee. It just said approved except holding these two lines.
Yep.
Okay.
Entertain the same motion then?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we send the budget for FY21 for ambulance services to the finance committee with the caveat that we haven't completed negotiations with the fire chief and the collective bargaining agreement on line 5115 is still open.
Second.
Oh, we can't hear you.
Second.
He can't hear. I love this, he can't hear you, will you call for some? Oh, there we go, there you are, there you are.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
Love this so much.
The building inspector, 241.
Okay, so based on your vote, his salary will change to 84,341 and 25 cents.
That's correct. Any other discussion?
What's the number again, please?
84,341 and 25 cents.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we send the building inspection budget for FY21 to the finance committee with a 2% increase for the building commissioner. Sending his salary at 84,34120. And that line 5115. The collective bargaining agreement for that has not been settled.
Just before we, I ask for a second. That salary is 84,341 dollars and 25 cents, not 20.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I'm not hearing.
Thank you, second. I seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. I heard your aye.
Oh my gosh, okay, we're almost done, highway, 422.
422, is Mr. Ferry going to sit in?
I don't believe so.
He visited us last time, selectman Gulart.
Second the night off, huh, Mr. Ferry?
He's expected tonight at our meeting later on.
Okay. So what's the salary number for Mr. Ferry? Because he's part of that.
Oh, so for this budget, he is at, so I do 80 and 20, 80% out of highway, 422, and 20% out of the stormwater. So that's where this number comes from. And I need a quick calculator, I'm sorry. Should be 81,538 and 48, excuse me, 46 cents.
You don't chip him a penny.
81,538, 46?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Oh, before I do that, is Mr. Ferry's administrative assistant in the union?
Um.
His salary would be infected, right?
So.
I think she is too, and there's been a question about that. You know what, that's a good reminder, I got to check on her, I got to check on her.
But her rate of pay would be pretty much based on whatever that contract is, I would think anyhow.
Yes.
And that's how it was advertised, we just did a comparable. I think it is because it was previously held by a union member, so I would have.
Correct, you're, you're correct, yeah.
Okay.
That's a good question.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we send the highway construction and maintenance budget of FY21 to the finance committee with the 80% salary for the highway superintendent at 81,538.46. And that we hold on line 5107 because the collective bargaining agreement is open.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. And should we now adjust 432?
Oh, sure. And that figure should be 20,384 and 61 cents.
2038460?
61 cents, 61, yep.
Okay, can I ask a basic question on this town administrator?
Yes.
How did the salary go up from what's here if we're reducing it from 2.5 to 2%? Does that have to do with the 8020?
No, it has to do with a, an error in his pay from the stormwater budget that was, that occurred last year during the budget. So you're going to see a little weird.
Okay, no worries, can I have the final total for 5105 again, I'm sorry?
Not collective, just for stormwater?
Yes, yeah.
20,384 and 61 cents.
Is, is 5107 in this budget also some time allocated for his administrative assistant?
I think it's actually Roz.
Oh, that's right, yep, okay, sorry. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we send the street cleaning slash stormwater budget for FY21 to the finance committee with a partial salary, 20% for the superintendent at 20,384 dollars and 61 cents with a hold on, with a caveat on line 5107 that the collective bargaining agreement is still open.
Second.
Any, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Now, I have a question on the, the salaries that you gave, I say one, the last name on that list. Do we have to adjust that in the budget?
Well, how I do this is you have a board of selectmen recommendation column for the finance committee to review. Based upon your vote, I have authority to make that change. It's historically been, she gives like one hour of her pay to primetime, but that's not what is actually happening. It's been a moving target, so we're trying to like narrow that down. So I've done this calculation for 80% counts on aging, 20% varying Tom Ferry essentially, 20% primetime because she's over-expended. I say that in air quotes, it's just the, that one line for primetime because she's actually giving more time to primetime lately, it's not one hour. So you don't have to re-vote on anything, you voted on salaries already. I update on the recommendations and I split it through 8020 and they see a column that's updated anyway. And the date of the wage vote, they see that as well.
Okay, so the only two salaries on this list that we haven't finalized would be the two chiefs, correct?
Correct, because their contracts are up and they both have stipends in their contract.
Okay.
Adam administrator, I have a question about budget 422 that we just approved. Were those changes that we approved, was that, I forgot, we have two versions for people watching. There was a version one submitted by the highway superintendent and a version two submitted by the board of health. And which version did we just?
Version, uh, version two.
Thank you, because I have all my notes on that one and then I was confused, okay.
Yeah, I put a big slash through it and version two is what we stuck with.
But version two is the one that originally had a department total of 755, 498, 11?
No, this, you're talking about stormwater because that, right, selectmen's are graphus?
Yeah, I'm only talking about 432.
So the total on the version that we're, we're working with is 204,775 and 99 cents.
Okay.
That doesn't include.
Okay, all right.
The salary that changed that we made, okay, all right.
All right, I'm all set.
I just wanted to make sure we were all using the same version.
Yeah, that one was, that one was dated February 10th. The previous one, version one, was January 22nd, so we voted on that conversion.
Perfect.
That's a good, that's a good marker, that's good.
So, there's nothing else on the agenda for this meeting? We're not, we can't discuss, we can't discuss the warrants or anything like that? We got to wait for a regular meeting, okay?
Motion to adjourn.
So, second, sorry.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it.
Before we end, now this is, in the email, there's a second address.